Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the October 2nd, 2025 Rockham County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd ask everyone to rise for the leaders.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And last thing, Tom. In the Board of Commissioners room, welcome back Commissioner Tom Barrello. Commissioner Gradu and myself. Allison, Jason Henry, Dan Talbot, Conan, Chuck Nickerson, Jude Gates, and Leila Matilla. And I see Aaron Coker and Sheriff Masas in, wow, you have odd the screen.
Yeah.
Stunning.
It's nice. Nice zoom effect. Okay. We will start with the consent agenda and I'll take a motion with respect to the September 4th meeting.
I'll make a motion and approve the October 2nd, no, excuse me, September 4, 2025 meeting minutes.
And we are.
Public meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
No, not just public.
Just non-public meeting minutes for September. On the motion to approve any discussion. On the motion to approve the September 4th non-public meeting minutes, Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
Commissioner Cambrillo, and I vote yes. Next, we have the AP list for October 2nd.
We'll make a motion to approve the October 2nd accounts payable list to win four million. One million check. Four million, two hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Discussion.
Did we get a little explanation on that?
We got, I mean, no.
I, maybe I missed it.
It was there. I mean, essentially, I can, I.
So there's, so there is a state bill on there. So that's 1.6 million of the grand total. So that's about, you know, one-third already.
Okay.
And then we got two months of Cigna medical claims and August was notably high at over one million. But again, keep in mind that there's a lag time for stop-loss reimbursement checks to come through.
So some of.
In the menu now.
So we have to pay upfront. So yeah, so about.
Then we get it back.
Yeah. So another one-third plus was about Cigna claim. So there's two-thirds of the list already covered.
It was like 1.7 is Cigna. And we had some discussion about that.
Yep, I'm good with that.
On the motion, Commissioner Cambrillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Next, we have Commissioners' Updates. Wow, it's a fairly big day today. And do we have any, do you guys have any updates?
I met with Chief Hudson from.
Yeah.
How do you pronounce that? I should have asked him.
I call him Chris.
Chris, yeah. Yesterday about their innovations with the ALS service picking up what Exeter Hospital dropped. And he's gonna come in here for a presentation next week. He's, but I don't know, we put him on the agenda, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And he, he's got a really interesting program. Essentially, they have two, two stations that they're working from Brentwood and Plasto. And they're picking up exactly what was going on with Exeter, but what was going on in Exeter was completely unsustainable. That's why the hospital dropped it. So he's working with a fairly unsustainable operation right at the moment, and he's able to got a lot of philanthropy. He's looking for money from us to help support this. And I, I, I think it should be something that's pushed a little bit more towards the towns. And he agrees, but there's a reality of getting everything passed in some of these small towns. There's a lot of people who just about know on everything and, you know, disregard for whether they really, what the service is. So it's a challenge and I'm looking forward to having his presentation. So that was worth, I spent about an hour and a half with him and get good understanding of what they do.
Yeah, he.
Oh, nice guy.
Me too.
Yeah, he said he talked about you guys.
I got him buying me lunch though. Did he buy you lunch?
Not yet. Maybe that's gonna be.
You know, it's probably good. I said to him, well, what are you looking for? He said, well, I looked at your budget. He says, I would only be looking for like 1% of your budget. I said, well, if it's 100 million, the math says that you're looking for a million. You need to come in and talk to us.
Well, I mean, I think the issue is gonna be, obviously, you know, they're in budget season right now, which is.
And that's why they're.
So their timing, right. But, um, but I think what we'll see is, you know, it's something to consider because obviously we don't have any money in this budget.
And it's an expansion of what we're doing. We don't deal with fire and rescue in general. You know, we've not, no connection. We have some law enforcement, but no fire rescue. And this would accept for our services with dispatch. So this would be changing what we do. Um, you know, unless it's a one-time thing that we're just helping to push them along until they figure out how to get the funding. But it's, it's something that's obvious, very necessary in the communities.
And they can apply through non-countess specials. That's another way to.
Absolutely.
Well, look, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for that update.
Last week I watched from earlier, watched the meeting, watched the meeting and I was horrified with a lot of it. We honestly, yeah, I'm not. First of all, I don't know how that came about that all of a sudden we have all those people here. That was kind of horrifying a few things. A lot of the accusations that were going to be potentially done, although I don't know if we're going to do it, but we haven't been approved by us, were definitely false. I've, I've been engaged with it. I've gone to Plymouth. I've gone to the jail over there with 1,500 people and I've met with George Reglars at a restaurant a couple of Friday ago because they obviously have ICE. The traffic, but the thing that really got me upset was to see an individual. I got a picture from a couple of people in this room with an individual on the back with the first letter F and the last weather, letter K, ICE on his sweater. And I was pretty horrified that we allowed that to come into our building. This is the residence home for that person to come in there. I thought it was pretty rude. And if I was here, I would have called her out. So I'm really disappointed. And as far as the public hearing, all that's gonna do is get more people out front with chicken and envelop, maybe more people with disturbing sweaters and more people with signs. I don't see the reason for a public hearing. The three of us run a business here, a hundred million dollar business. We're going to be making a decision if ICE approves us. So I don't see the justice of the public hearing. I'm not for it because all it's gonna be is a bigger show than we had last year. And you folks witnessed, I'm glad it wasn't here this year. So I'm not in favor of public hearing. I mean, what does that do for me? Do I go and get a bunch of Republicans, go out, reach out to all the state reps that are for it? And we have a dog and pony show. I'm not for a public hearing. The three of us make decisions in this building. And I think we do our homework and we say yes or we say no. And I'm not solid on yes and I'm not solid on no. I'm on the fence. I'm still doing homework. Jason and I had a good conversation Monday about ICE. And I anticipate that him and I and his group are gonna have a meeting about ICE because I want to learn ICE and give a vote with my mind. So I'm not for the public hearing. I know you guys made a motion with me not here. I revoked somebody who sent that because I think it's just gonna be a bigger show than you folks witnessed last week. That's it. And I revoked going forward and not have anybody come in this building. This is the residence home. If someone come in that room with a sweater like that was absolutely uncalled for. I was horrified when somebody sent the picture. I thought it was maybe photo op that someone put down on someone's sweater, but somebody else walked in a residence home in our building with that sweater. I'm really, really upset about it.
If I may, just briefly, like, I mean, I think that to the extent that, I mean, we don't get to regulate this is like expression. But, um, but to the extent that we're gonna move forward in the other building, I mean, that, that part of that whole goal of having the auditorium and that's where we intend to host that is so that we don't, I mean, it is disruptive. We, this is the problem. This was part of the whole mindset between having the new building that we're not here and being disrupted because it is, you're right. It is absolutely their home.
And I know you folks who care, not interrupting. I know everybody in this room obviously felt uncomfortable. We've gone to a couple of rooms and all of a sudden we have a little bumper, YouTube and bumper, people coming in. That's really awful. I'm sorry.
But I think there's another point, which is I think the public hearing is appropriate. And I, you know, I didn't draw, you're, the insinuation is sort of that I've drummed up. I don't, so I, I, I don't accept that. It, this has been in the newspaper. Or you said, what do you want me to do? Get some?
Obviously, because there wasn't a Republican in that group.
But this is a product of.
So I reached out to state reps and senators and say.
Commissioner, if you just let me finish and then you can respond. I, we went to, you know, it was in the newspaper for all papers four times. And so that's the traction because it has been published.
It was in the paper for them to come here last Thursday because I didn't see that part.
No, it was advertised that we were contemplating.
And.
I don't think there was a date.
But, well, I mean, it's not, I mean, the newspaper had that it was, we have our meeting, so. Separate and distinct is, we have a job, we, the reason I wanted to have a public hearing is to hear people's perspectives. We have, we were elected by people who like, and we have, obviously, it is our decision to make. But we owe it to our constituency to hear them out. And appearing at 11 o'clock for a Commissioners' Meeting doesn't really allow a lot of working people to join the dialogue. It's a, it's a difficult time to meet for our community members. And so I think a public hearing, and it is appropriate in that it allows me, but this is a, obviously, you know, a big decision for the county and it's a big decision and a big impact on our constituency. And so I don't, ultimately, you're right, it's absolutely our decision. But I don't think that having public input, I mean, is a bad thing. And I think, you know, Superintendent Henry, would you, so, you know, how, public hearing is.
Then has no opinion on, this is, this is the Commissioner's decision. I try and stay out of it much as possible.
Okay. Well, I think a, a public hearing is appropriate given the, the nature of that it's getting so.
They made the motion by two to zero, so you guys, it'll have, it'll be a show, I'm sure.
So I'd like to just comment on that since we're on the topic. I, I don't have a problem with the public coming in and talking to us. I disagreed with everybody that walked in the door. But I politely listened and I'm happy to do that again. Now, when you mentioned that you wanted to have a public hearing, I don't draw much of a distinction between public hearing and public comment. To me, it's sort of the same thing, except you were calling it something different. People want to come in and discuss and tell their opinions about some of the actions that we're about to take. I'm okay with that. But I, I was envisioning that this would happen as part of our regular meeting. And we put the public comment portion in the front and we call it a public hearing. I, I, I don't know how that differs from a, a regular meeting. I am concerned with the decorum of that. And I think that we should address the length of time people are gonna talk, whether they're being completely repetitive, you know, if, if they can, you know, if they could be more concise with what their argument is, you know, on both sides. And, you know, keep their comments to maybe two minutes or, and maybe a total of 15 or 20 minutes. I, 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 I just, I'm not, I'm not like, not zeroed in on any one of those specifics. But I think that we should upfront all agree how much time we're gonna take to listen because, you know, we have 30 people coming in here and they all said the same thing. Kinda. You know, so I, it's just like, I, it wasn't, I could have gotten that opinion much more quickly with everybody saying, yeah, we all agree with this. She's gonna speak for us. So I don't know.
I mean, I think if we're having a public, you know, people have a right to speak in public, comment or public hearing regardless, but I agree. I think we, like, and I think you and I, I think I established, I said five minutes and maybe we don't agree that five minutes is the time, but you.
Well, five minutes time 30 would have been a problem. Most people didn't talk that long.
But we have to establish, and I think you and I were both actually running our phones for the time because, me too, because when we were pushing, there was one, only one individual who pushed that limit. And I was about to, I started to, just to say that was, you know, because I agree, we need to like establish sort of the parameters of it. So because it's not appropriate for someone to go on for 15 minutes and use up like the time for everybody. But I agree, I think before that, and I think you made a good point that in Salem, there's a public hearing. Like, and then the vote, right? It's like in.
That's usually how we like for our budget.
But I was thinking, I, in my mind, I was, I think I said this, it was last week, which is establish it as a special meeting.
Just for that purpose.
Purpose.
Just for the public hearing and not have the vote, just listen.
Special hearing plus the vote. We could just have this one discrete issue. And again, it's like, we're trying to and to, we have no idea if when ICE comes back, we need to evaluate it and then we need to schedule that public hearing slash issue on the agenda. I anticipate, you know, this will happen in due course, but I, that, I think you made a good point, which is we have the public hearing in conjunction with the meeting, um, meeting to vote, like take a vote on it, right? But that, that should be like, because I would anticipate people from, lots of people are going to attend because I think it's an important issue in our community that, you know, doing it separately, a special meeting would make more sense than tying up our regularly scheduled programming.
I agree with that. So are we planning a public hearing? We guys are, I'm not sure where I'll be that day, but I'll be there. I can move on with this show. Are we planning to wait for ICE to give us that they would want us for? There's no real reason to have a public hearing knowing that we're not even accepted by ICE. Am I correct?
It wouldn't, I assume we wouldn't have a public hearing and a vote until we have a contract to vote on.
Yeah, we wait for paperwork so that we, we don't even, we haven't decided because we don't know what we're voting on. We don't know what's gonna be offered or what the parameter that we're gonna have to digest the contract and and maybe if we have a gathering of people there that night, we should have some brief presentation that says, here's the outline of what, what the plan is. For, you know, so that people are informed. Because it's gonna be a big contract and I'm sure it's gonna be a little bit complicated and there will be many uninformed people. A lot of the people that showed up last week thought we were taking a vote on it. I don't know how they got that impression, but, because I didn't read that in any of the newspaper articles, but they got that impression. So they're likely to get a lot of wrong impressions if we don't present to them. Look, here's, here's the synopsis of the contract.
I agree. We could do a, a public presentation on the, what it is, get public comment and then, that makes sense. Um, okay. Um, any other, uh, well, I mean, that was sort of new business, all this, but we took it on in Commissioners' Updates. We'll move right to the travel and training.
We've motion to approve travel and training request for the Board of Commissioners to attend the New Hampshire Association of Counties Conference to be held at the Omni Mount Washington Hotel from Sunday, November 9th through Tuesday, November 11th at an estimated cost of $4,332.29.
Second.
Discussion. Um, just that this is the, um, we attend the Association of Counties Conference each year. It's really a wonderful event and an opportunity to meet, see what other counties are operating and work with them. So, um, it's certainly something that I really enjoy. Yeah. I think it's very instructive. And the sessions are always great. Really, really, I've gotten so much.
If I can do a plug, I mean, again, the committee that put this together, there's some really, really good, um, I know some years since opening down this year, they've done a really good job of getting good speakers and it looks like it's gonna be really good.
Great. Excellent. Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
Commissioner Cambrillo, and I vote yes. Okay, uh, we have the urban county status entitlement to CBBG funding.
I'll make a motion to fulfill entitlement for urban county status under the Community Development Blocking Program, officially 2026, and I'll authorize the chair to sign the response letter addressed to the Office of the Community Development.
Second.
Discussion. Yes.
So the reason why we want to defer is that if the county were to accept this, yes, it's guaranteed money, but it means that we artificially or not artificially, we actually restrict the potential CBBG funds that are in 36 communities because only Portsmouth accepted their own urban designation. They control their own allotment of money, but we would artificially be restricting what other towns like Derry could possibly put in for, for CBBG grants. So.
Yeah, so by deferring, we give the towns the opportunity to, um, to collect and if they don't collect them, it makes sense for us to do it, but we don't want to preempt them.
No, and I'm citing Derry because Derry has historically been one of the most prolific, uh, towns to put in for, um, requests. Or, or have one of their housing, so housing authorities ask for requests, usually for like water sewer improvements. So it's public works, stuff, it's construction, it's a lot of different things.
Great. Um, on the motion, Commissioner Cambrillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
We have an exception request seven for wage increase for Department of Corrections.
I'll make a motion to bring the exception. Uh, request seven there for the Department of Corrections off the table.
Second.
No, actually, they were the motion to, right?
Well, I think.
Yeah, we, we need off the table first, yeah.
On the motion, Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
Commissioner Cambrillo, and I vote yes. Next, we have the second motion.
Second motion to approve a exception request pursuant to personnel policy seven there for wage increase for Department of Corrections employee JW.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I'd like to comment on that. Last week, I, um, I object to having $800. But apparently that issue has already been addressed. It's not $800, but it's brought to my attention this morning. It's 480, which I still think is excessive. And also there's, uh, the, the issue of how much vacation time that we would pay out at the, at the end. I think that we should discuss, uh, if more in general terms, what those limits ought to be. So first, uh, second, kind of rubs me the wrong way that, uh, somebody is kind of gaming the system a little bit, uh, in that they retire the day that they're getting a raise, uh, which is what was the intention. But those are the rules and that's the way it works. So, uh, and especially since this is an exception request, uh, especially since we have a long-term employee who's been a good employee and obviously good enough that we have him back as a, or DM employee. Uh, I've reversed my, uh, opinions on, uh, denying that, uh, and I'll be supporting the exception.
And I think actually, if I, just as a point of clarification, you were, I think you last week were, you were like, I'm unsure. I'm leaning this way, but I think we should, so.
Right. So it gave me some time to digest it and talk to a few people and.
Like I said, I think my, I predicated my vote, my decision based on detrimental reliance based and I.
And that's right, there was that.
That's, it was, seems like a simple issue to me in that respect and, um, otherwise, um, I think we're.
And then you got the table to provide yourself a chart. Superintendent Allison, you're on the grid. So I got all the answers at one.
Great. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Cambrillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
And I vote yeah. Next, we have a Department of Corrections travel and training request.
Make a motion to approve a travel and training junket for any request for two Department of Corrections employees, JHSN, the Ten, Illegal and Liability Risk Management Institute, called Las Vegas, Nevada, Tuesday, December 2nd, from Thursday, December 4th, at an estimated cost of $5,712.72, as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll just comment that people who run conferences purposely put them in places where people would like to travel to. Uh, and at Las Vegas sounds pretty glamorous, but my experience is when I've gone for conventions, I've had no fun. I just worked the whole time. Even though there's all this glitter and glamour around you, you know, so, uh, really, it is, I think, believe this is about education and appropriate that, um, we go, although I'd be nice if they had the convention in Boston, so it didn't cost us so much money, but that's not how conventions are planned.
I have one issue. I was just looking, so I, it looks like the travel is on Sunday, the 30th.
Those moved to Monday. They got changed. They got changed.
Is the, so you're traveling on Monday?
Correct.
My issue is with the price of airline. It says 27.66 and I was like, that's, and I thought it was still um, Sunday. So I looked up JetBlue flights this morning from, uh, Boston to Las Vegas and back on the same flight, actually. And the flight price I got on JetBlue was $346.
So that was a placeholder, this is placeholder Catherine, when she looked at this at that time, she got, it's not gonna be that. We don't think it's this big that much, so.
And it looks weird the way the, the, it's very, I don't know, like, I was confused about the support because it looks like on the support that there was like, the price was covering over the ad bag. I don't know, but the, it, the support didn't detail out the actual, like, why? How did you get 27 66? And I got, I just looked up and the flights were like 300 freaking bucks.
Again, well.
So I'd, I'd just like to table this a week so we can try to get real numbers. Like, I mean, why is? That's a $2,000.
These aren't real numbers. To begin with, you say, no, it's again, just initial to get it over here to for approved, so that way she can actually look and dig in, see what the, the prices are gonna be. There's not gonna be that. Can I come back to you again with, 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 she thinks it's gonna, what we think it's gonna be? I, I would support tabling this till we get some more, I mean, that's not gonna interrupt what you're, timing wise. No. A, a week is not gonna make a difference.
Why are we using fake numbers?
Okay. When Catherine looked it up, that's what she found.
Okay. I can tell.
We can, we can go back, take.
Okay. Cause I can send you my JetBlue, like I literally looked it up this morning and it's 346.97 per flight.
I can find them.
Great.
Uh, I'll make a motion to table this until next week.
Um, on any, on the motion table, Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
Commissioner Cambrillo, and I vote yes. That's tabled. Okay. We have a bid waiver for facilities operations. For KPMB.
Make a motion to approve the KPMB Enterprises LLC closing bid waiver on the amount of 109,483 dollars for HVACF grade products in progress. And for the addition of 16 replacement thermostats, wiring, programming, graphics and physical building is recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning, that team.
Second.
Discussion. The, I just, in terms of, um, bid waiver requests, I just like, because.
It's a project in progress. We already have Kate, Andy and Simmons onboard actively programming.
Yeah, I don't think we could switch.
Yeah, I know. No, absolutely not. And I, like, I, I think I speak this all the time, which is like, yeah, it's worth it. So on the mission, any other discussion? Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
Commissioner Cambrillo. And I vote yes. Next, we have the intergovernmental fiscal year 2026 intergovernmental transfer agreement.
Make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 intergovernmental transfer agreement, IGT, which in Hampshire, we development health and medical services for a net obligation of 18,057.
It's 18, 18 million.
18. That's like that rank. 18 million, uh, 57,796 dollars is going with the RRC. 167,418, DA and Exhibit A of the Agreement and Authority to Fairly Sign All This. So, the Commission, I can remember about the senior director of finance.
Second.
Discussion. We are.
Okay.
We're at, what, do you want?
So this is the intergovernmental transfer agreement that CMS requires and it goes both ways. For the county's part, it's paying out our net cap, which is broken up by monthly billings by day to day. And then also this enables the county in the eyes of CMS to receive quarterly input revenues and also the annual pro share from the state. So.
And, and we're actually, just for point of reference, we're down half a million from last season. Right?
Well, those part, that's the $22 million credits.
Okay, well, so it's not such a good news.
We'll enjoy that for years. We'll enjoy it for four years.
I'm voting shark.
It's still good news. Yes, it's down.
Listen, uh, any further discussion? Uh, Commissioner Cambrillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Gaddu.
Yes.
And I vote yeah.
Thank you.
Next, we have the proposed revision to the sign-on bonus.
Make a motion to approve the revision of the sign-on doors for the addition of laundry. A housekeeper, LNA, LPN, R and Shifted. A housekeeper L and A L P and R and shift tech. President care supervisor, personal care partner, licensed care partner, and the fee partner. As recommended by the senior director.
Second.
Discussion? You're in free time?
It was just, um we just wanna make sure it's just a clear, cuz verbal warnings doesn't listed in there, but even though it was said as, you know. As needed, um it had already been fed in years ago by the attorneys, but it's come up as a questionable thing, so we wanna just make it very clear that it's. Including but not limited to.
So verbal warning means you don't get your bump, bump.
Right, in that way, yes, thank you.
My clarification. On the motion, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Cumbrel, and I vote yeah. Next, we have the U N H tuition discount partnership discussion.
So I learned about this through our H R affiliate group, uh Cheshire Tommy, uh Kim. Uh May up there had brought it to the attention of H R directors that there's actually a partnership with U N H. And it's with um. With that allows for uh a hundred percent of their online classes through any U N H College of Professional Studies. That families and um I'm sorry, employees and their families can have a reduction in tuition for the online classes under that. Uh under that heading of twenty percent. Um all we would have to do is just promote it. Um sign an agreement and if we terminate the agreement, it's a fourteen day notice. What we did ahead of time, Cheshire County is holding out on some of the other counties too, some license incentives. Employees that are trying to belong with education and are struggling with the cost of online or in person. And I did put it through Primax and they said their agreement form was, there was no changes that would be needed for it. Um but it will, we do have some folks that are taking some classes and um I think it would be a nice benefit to set up a house other than us promoting it and making sure that. We're, you know, letting folks know about it and maybe put it up on our website or we can put it up in our, um actually our newsletter, we'll put it on the newsletter. Um and I think it's a, it would be a nice feat for us to have a nice no cost benefit to the counties.
Great. Uh what does promotion mean?
Promotion to them is um uh county thanks to marketing the program annually. Meaning in any kind of way that we would want to do it and uh we talked about uh. Uh maybe putting uh information up on our county website or potentially just like newsletter. Uh maybe a communication that we can send out to all of our staff and um I don't have the proof that we've done it, it's just in the partnerships.
I mean, just seems like a great opportunity for our employees. It's like anytime anybody can have like a little more accessible access to education. It's a wonderful thing and it's another just like county perk in terms of retention and recruitment, so.
And extends to the family and yeah, so I can. That's great. Thank you. I'll bring it back, I will bring that. A good agreement in the next. Coordinating if that's okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um okay, moving on, we have uh long term care fiscal year twenty six nurse Sally line budget review.
We're under budget.
Yeah, well, so.
We're under budget from what we were spent with last year. Um we do have a small amount that we're over, but we anticipated that there would be because we've been hiring so much with all of their orientation hours. Having them in um very happy about it, but having fourteen plus people in orientation at once is a lot. Um and our agency spend um.
Yeah, that's the number.
The balance. Is a nice, is a nice number. Um but looking at, I just had a lean bullet. For the kind of the totals and the amounts our agency looks like it's less than last year at the current time and. So the agency numbers will always fluctuate though, and we always are going backwards on the numbers because as we do the billing. And how each agency bills. Um.
So this will be like, I don't know, maybe I'd like um. I mean, cuz I know it takes a while to get the agency data, but maybe at the end of October, we'll be able to do a first quarter. Like little mini review of if it's okay between comparing both like nursing or nursing budget line as well as the agency line. So, yeah, because it doesn't bother me so much that we're a little over due to orientation costs. If that, you know, if we're under on um agency because.
Right.
For obvious reasons.
This feels like.
We're moving.
It's a little chunk at a time to.
Yeah.
To, you know, how do you, how do you eat an elephant's? One food at a time.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Really what we're about and.
I think as a whole too, there's other things that go into the numbers that we've been working on. I know um Chuck, Allison and I have had a lot of conversations around even contracting and the hour, then unfolding that and around some of those pieces. And then bad and complete credit to Ben, he made the best widget for my um. My promos where looking at overtime and across all departments, just not just nursing. Looking at overtime and preventable overtime, and we've been having a lot of conversations around that as a whole too. Which um we've seen a lot of progress in some departments, there's fifteen minutes, so it seemed like lots of fifteen minutes, like a ten people every week. Add that really. So we've been spending a lot of time in this report, little thing gives the breakdowns, the cost in one click button, it's great.
Really.
Life changing.
Well, I mean, it's so great to get the data. I mean, that's when you can make changes, when you actually understand the data, have the data and can understand it, so. Thank you, through the teamwork. Teamwork can make the dream work. And I mean, I feel like, you know, particularly you, Commissioner, to do it, you and I were. Um, you know, the ones who I like years ago were like trying to put in uh stipends. For the, you know, nursing and.
It was still half of what we had to pay the agency with the extra money and it was like.
We're finally like getting to that point where we're seeing the fruits of that. Um investment as well as, I mean, it's not ex- non-exclusively, cuz I know that the team.
I I think it's a huge component of it, um it, you know, at the end of the day, it it's, they're an important component of it to be competitive. Um. Life's expensive, right? So that's a component as well. Um in addition to have all of the measures that have been taken across the county, the job fair, H R, Autumn. So I I think it's a great combination of everything.
Great. Well, thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. Uh, great to department head updates. Um gonna start with Chuck today, not for Allison. Oh, Kathy, oh, actually. We have Kathy, Kathy Stasich. Good morning.
Hang on a second. Thank you. Appreciate that, Lily. Yeah, um I wanna. Everything, you know, same old, same old here, we're making, I tell you, it's been a, it's been a good few days, uh the last few days, money wise. Uh with revenues, obviously, um we're seeing. A lot more um activity, real estate wise, with closings, which is nice. Um I wanna make a shout out, a thank you to Jude, she was very nice and I had my. Unbeknownst to me, my uh vendor, Fiddler, people from Fiddler, from I- from Iowa showed up here yesterday. Um out of the blue, and so Jude was nice enough to let me bring them over to see the new facility. Um and they were extremely impressed, extremely impressed, so I I wanna thank Jude for that. Um other than that, it's uh business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Chuck.
Um as as is the norm, we're in October, so it's another month that follows a quarter end, so very busy now with grant, payroll and other. Uh required filings. Uh obviously work on the different um audits continues as well. New Medicaid passport was delivered. Uh without issue. Um. Again, just uh it's nice to have accounting analyst um on board now. And he's he's catching on very quickly, so I think it's gonna be great for the county. Um thank you again as far as the job fair, um we actually had a good interview with. A candidate that came in for the job fair, so for grant writer. And uh one of the other two interviews that we've already had with a potential grant writer candidate um also went very well. Uh in addition, so um and then we've got some uh other grant writer interviews, I believe lined up as well as. Some for the barrel practitioner as well, so I think those will be next Thursday, Friday, I believe, so.
Fine.
Yes, so business as usual, so.
Hey, thank you, Chuck.
Good morning. Um yeah, as far as the doctor goes, we're actually, we've pushed someone forward to Autumn yesterday, asked them to make an offer for. For open grounds position, um a candidate came from the job fair. And we're interviewing a ship technician, a seismologist, and so we're pretty excited about it, yeah, it was very helpful to us, it was certainly worth it, and it was very worth it. Um just to um jump a little bit on what Kathy said. It was such a joy for me to walk through with her and watch her like brag about her news. It it just reminds you, this is what we've been working for all this time. And then Kathy and the people are gonna be so happy there. And the folks from Fiddler, they said to Kathy, this is gonna be the nicest deeds. In the, I think he said the country, um they were very impressed. I think the county attorney is gonna be equally happy. I think. Everyone that goes into that building is gonna be equally happy, and this is what we've been working for, so it was, it was really fun for me. I didn't mind jumping out of my schedule at all. Kathy.
Ah, exciting.
It is really exciting. This is what we're doing for. Um, we're taking training up to the building right now, line of mechanics are electrical, we have generator and transfer switch training next week. We've done all the H V C units. All of the air handling equipment. We're taking training on the access control and the cameras, so all of that training is coming together. I signed off on all the keys yesterday, I've got the keys to the building, although almost everyone will just have a fog. For access, but we still have to have the backup system, just we have in all the buildings. Um. The O and M contract for the solar array is being reviewed by Primax right now. Chuck has taken care of insurance coverage. For the array, um interestingly, it said coverage including terrorism. Coverage, which is the first time I've never seen that. It was a little bit eerie, but I thought it was kind of noteworthy.
It was on the last one.
Oh, was it? I didn't see it on the last one.
Sorry.
Terrorism coverage.
Yeah.
I thought that was kind of interesting. Um the A V network is gonna be starting to be installed on Monday. So that's your, that's it there, it'll be well in place for all of the different houses and stuff. We're still targeting, I believe, November seventh ish. Next week, I'll bring you the empty. Um. Time capsule, I know Allison's already working on stuff that needs to go into it. So I'll bring it to you next week with just one cap on it, you can fill it up and then we'll glue the other cap on and that could be set when when we do the river heading. Um closing in on the moving R F P right now, Robin in block five are definitely looking at the end of the month, so we'll probably be looking at the first week of November. We start moving folks, I must have some catastrophic thing that happens. Um so I will have a recommendation for the mover to you next week. Right. Um it was a little odd because one of them came in around twenty five ish. And the other one came in around fifty, but surprisingly, the twenty five ish one, the references are better, their price is better, their proposal was more flushed out, so. I was just really, you know, a little hesitant to go forward with it. I wanted to make sure it's everything that we need and it appears to be. Other than that, we're we're busy all over the place. Drifted flooring is going really nicely, it was, it was great. Um. We're busy, business as usual is, or Chuck's what to say.
So the move, if if I, uh the mover, is that uh. What is that encompassing? Which departments? All of them? Sheriff as well as?
Yep. They they did a site, visited everyone. In fact, the sheriff had like twelve thousand pounds of ammunition that they reviewed and. The sheriff is gonna inventory and hold hands with the visitor goes across the street. Four days for deeds. They're gonna individually wrap every book and index it and make sure that it goes back exactly where it came out. All of the requirements, especially in deeds, cuz their stuff is very, very important.
So deeds has some big pieces of equipment that have to move, they figured that out?
They figured that out, they approved most of those long files in one piece. So they figured it out, they were there, they did the site visit, we gave them the list. They had really great references, they do all the moving for a couple of like commercial real estates. Um a high end window place, they do all their windows and doors, custom delivery, they work for a couple of um. Just, I think they do everything for states for discount, like they're all over the place, they're qualified. It, they appear to be very qualified.
So wh- when would you, do you have a guess of it on when that would actually occur?
My guess estimate is the first week in November.
Okay.
I think um, I think logistically, and I I'm kind of just speaking off the cuff here, cuz Robin and I just sat with block five yesterday for a couple of details. I think logistically, the county attorney might be a little bit easier to move. Kathy's stuff is just so complicated. And there's a lot of um coordination with Fiddler, et cetera, so I think. They're talking four days for deeds, three days for county attorney and two days for the sheriff. We had planned on leaving the sheriff to the end anyway. Um just because we wanna, yeah, nine working days. We wanna get out of the courthouse first. And I think the sheriff, again, has some very critical issues that need to be met. Some of their programming can't be run in both buildings at the same time. So they're working really hard to come up with a good game plan for that, Rob has met with them several times. I know um Kevin Walsh has been working hard, they've had motor oil in for several walkthroughs, so. We're trying to get all the bases covered. There are a a ton of moving pieces, but seems to be coming into place.
Okay, and I have one other question. Uh I'm really curious to know what's up with the Driscoll two painting project. We get, we got bids and we have not seen an o- a a recommendation yet.
Recommendation because I didn't have all the references until yesterday. Next, so I.
Are the prices similar to what you expected?
Yes. One of the vendors at the last go around. Um who did not get the award because they were late with their R F P, they were a tiny bit lower than the person who was awarded it. They came in and they came in at the same price. So they're a little bit.
So their bid didn't change.
Their bid did not change, they under- and they said.
And they understood what it was that they were expected to paint.
Their first bid said hallways, bedrooms.
Yeah.
Day, you know, the day room, they, everyone knew what the bid was.
Okay, there, I just wanted to.
Their bid has not changed. I just wanted to double check references because I kind of felt like I got burned last time and I didn't check enough.
Sure.
Um wow, and these folks have like, they've done work for Riverwoods. They've, they're a preferred vendor for the state of Hampshire. So we've been really working hard to make sure that they're very thoroughly ready before we go forward, but they were a little bit lower than the one of last time.
Very good, thank you.
So exciting. It's gonna look really good with that.
It's so nice when the finishes happen, it's like you work. Um. Um antenna. We're in antenna update.
We have a a beginning of an antenna update. Um they do think that they can do the equipment on the ground and first floor only. So that saves us a little bit. The original code from the folks who engineered it was about forty seven thousand dollars, which is half of what we had.
That wasn't, yeah, I was.
However, um it it will require a two hour protection all the way through the building. So Harvey's gonna have to build walls.
Yeah.
Um you know, every place they make, every every bit of it has to be two hour protected, just like a. Like an area of refuge. So there'll be some expense associated with that. The recommendation. The um engineering work and the proposal has gone to the architect and the electrical engineer, cuz now they have to figure out exactly where it's going to go. So they can issue an A S I for Harvey to price it out, but it's better than I was expecting.
Essentially build a chase.
Essentially.
Two hour chase.
Yes, it was some consideration that they might be able to go outside the building.
Yeah.
With two hour cabling, but then every time you go into the building. It has to be a two hour, you have to have two hour slices, you have to pick up two hour cabling inside. It really wasn't saving anything. So they're trying to figure out maybe proximity to the elevator, you can't be in an elevator shaft, that's code. But maybe proximity to the elevator shaft will get them all the way up with the two hour that they need. The downstairs where the where the repeater's gonna go is gonna need to be locked or wills. Because of the size of the equipment, but from then all the way to the antennas shouldn't be quite as bad.
Okay.
I should, I should have reported on that.
We know how much this is gonna cost yet or waiting for that?
We're waiting, yeah, we're on our way.
But it's not as bad as initially, I mean, forty seven instead of, I was, I.
We figured it would be way over.
Yeah, hundred, yeah.
Which eventually it might be, I don't know, but for now, we're get, it's better than we expected the initial recommendations. And once that's, once that goes forward, I think we can talk to the state fire marshal's office in Brentwood. To give us a temporary certificate of occupancy. Brentwood said they won't object to it if the state signs off on it, but we have to have a plan in place for the communication.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. Uh Alison.
Um just um the scarecrows are coming in. Thank you everybody who's participating. Um those will get put up on Monday. Um and then folks can, from the different departments can come back in and do any things that they need to do at the last minute. Um. The years of service event is on October, Wednesday, October twenty second, we will be submitting the um. Food selections, we have a few people to do some outreach calls on, we may get, and the O D D's involved that have not uh responded, we just wanna make sure that they're not. excluded if they just have forgotten about it or thrown the card away, whatever have you. So we do that. The newsletter I sent out, uh, information to the O D Ds about getting a paragraph, working towards a picture. We've got the newsletter all specked out, just to populate everything once we get it. So that'll be, um, a historical piece that will go into the time capsule. We're keeping it to eight pages front and back, so it's limited and slim and will fit right in there. But that's exciting. Uh, I look forward to leaving everybody's information and it'll be funny to see what people will think of that a hundred years or so from now. And I think that is about it. We do have six people that will be in our October sixth, uh, orientation. We have the electrician telecon person, which is fantastic. We've filled that. Uh, the shift technician has been filled and we do have a dispatcher, so that is great. And then we have, um, a shift, uh, L P N and an R N, first shift and third shift. October twentieth, um, we're up around twelve, all on this side of the house, meaning nursing and floor maintenance. So that's twelve. And we also have four from the Department of Corrections. We're trying to figure out how we're gonna work it out because it's, you know, twelve is a high point and adding on to that makes it a little bit cumbersome, but I'll work with Jason to figure out if we can have him separately, his group separately somewhere and, and have somebody else work that. So everybody gets in at the same time, but it might be just flipping times.
How many new from, in, on the nursing side, um, long-term care? How many newer we had today?
Uh, I mean fiscal year today, I should.
Oh, I don't have those numbers. I'm sorry.
I don't have it off the top of my head. Um, but we've had, I think, three coming in are for E B S. We've had multiple nurses, multiple L and A's. We've seen, um, we had, we've been running with two agencies, Supes on three to eleven following the retirements. One, um, converted is coming on house staff. The other one's Phil.
Man.
Uh, we have a few other nurses and staff that have been reaching out to us about converting, because I think now that we're seeing these large groups come in, some of the individuals are realizing
Feeling a little nervous.
Yeah.
Diminished, yeah.
Uh, which is great. And one of the ones that reached out, I've been trying, she was the first conversation I had. So I'm hopeful we'll be able to make that one work. Uh, but we have had nurses, L and A's, floor tech.
Um, mostly the people that are coming in on the twentieth are residual of the job fair. So we have a, uh, an L and A, second shift, a housekeeper. Uh, P C P or on the assisted living side. We do have an R N coming on, um, two more L and A's. Um, on this side of the house, uh, per D M on A. We love having per D Ms. We did get a life enrichment for, um, Ken's group and we have another laundry and a four minutes tech. Those were key for, you know. It's been really hard. So I was very excited to see that, you know, to help them out, housekeeping, laundry and all that. That's, that's huge. And then we have another, another full-time L and A that couldn't make it to the sixth, so we moved church to the twentieth. Um, it's nice that Jason's group is gonna have three fractional officers and a case manager, uh, coming on board, because that's been kind of you know, kind of lagging there on the fractional side of the house, you know, those, but I'm glad to see that's happening too. So it's, it's a big group, so another big group. So it's exciting to see folks come in.
Great. We need an auto pen for these.
Nice. Jason.
Um, yeah, thank for the, the, um, improvement night. We didn't get a, a big influx, but we were able to snag a couple out of them, um, that had recent interviews and seemed to work out with, um, a, a young gentleman that's still in high school. Came with his mom, was looking around, um, and asked a lot of questions. So again, we're one of the positions that you can start at eighteen years old and we got eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one that they wanted to go into to a, a police officer to have that good training. And we've had a lot of staff from our building go to local E Ds around, or even some other states. Um, cause they're well-rounded and, you know, now we have a reputation of producing high-quality, um, individuals. So unfortunately, but fortunately for them, they're gonna move on when it gets more capital.
And I'm so sorry, if I may interject, I think that's one of the things that was so beautiful about it being different county, could that individual came to meet with my team and then saw corrections and thought that more aligned with what? And they were individuals that Jews went for Jews that ended up coming on to us and kind of were able to support.
It was great. Yeah, it was.
Yeah, very cool. That's a really good point.
Yeah, work that, yeah, that's right. Find your boss people around. You might be a little better over there. It was good. Um. Oh. Constantino.
I don't just know that section. Lovely.
Those that know Constantino, he's definitely a wonderful recruiter. He's a character and, and that, he gets, he'll snag you if he can get you.
Like, yeah.
Everything's for a fee though, but just, you know, everything costs you something. Um, right now we're at a hundred seventy-eight in house. Um, part of that is explosion of females. We have twenty-two and right now, yeah, so obviously it would explosion, we have twenty-two females right now and females around the state have gone way up. So normally we're able to send some out. Um, they're kind of full up right now too. So it's, uh, well, you know, we'll, we'll see if the trend continues or drops off, but we'll, we'll, we'll see. But that's where we have a, a higher count because of that. Uh, like I said, new case manager, we're happy to be able to hire a new case manager, which is fantastic. Um, our new chaplain started and she's actually cross-training with Angie today and doing some stuff. Um, but we're very excited about that. She's, seems like a very nice, a nice, Nubia is her name. Uh, she's a very nice lady and did a great job for us. She has she has corrections experience as well. So she's been inside and understands how that works. And I think that's all I have. Tomorrow's Association of Counties Executive Meeting, so being conquered tomorrow, it's almost be a conquer tomorrow for that, for that. And, uh, so again.
Thank you.
I'm not a bad sentiment. Um, we are at a hundred and thirty-four at the nursing home. We are at forty-seven at the assisted living. Unfortunately, we did have another staff that tested positive during the timeframe, although there haven't been any residents, but it does keep us in testing a little longer as a precaution. But we have the one staff member. Um, October is always a busy time in the nursing homeland, because that's when all of our M D S changes happen. Um, so working through some of those as well as, um, the education around our kind of corrections. We are doing our annual skills fair, um, in October this year. Uh, we're doing a different theme that's around the world with the wee kind of passports, et cetera. And one of the pieces that he did and Amanda in social services did a beautiful job. Um, one of the components on nursing home that is talked about a lot is having cultural competencies around caring for individuals and that person centered. So every country, she made a beautiful sign about some of those, um, differences. So that staff will learn about the differences as they go around, in addition to the skill set, so that we are providing that personalized culturally competent um, care. She did an absolutely beautiful job with it. Um, other than that, we're finalizing the raffles. The pie contest is underway. Uh, we may extend it a little bit because some people are just getting it figured out. Um, So originally, yeah, it was originally was always gonna be next Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, one of the pieces, I'm off for a funeral for a few days next week, including that day. And I'm currently in second place. So, you know, I, I gotta have to be here. Um, but
Who's in first place?
Our E B S Sam. He is, um, however, I will say
It's gonna have a lot of cleanup to do.
Both of you gentlemen are on the board.
You're on the board.
Both on the board.
Oh, around the board?
Yeah. Kate's not, but you two are.
Well, I don't worry, but I'll go get my wallet. She'll be on the board.
So if you look by the switchboard, I'm gonna just plug it, because I know a lot of people watch this too, and we send flyers, we hand out information. And as we're talking to people, they're like, wait, what?
Yeah.
So we're still having a lot of conversations. Um, there's a board, I don't know if you can see it on my phone, up on the wall, um, by the switchboard. And we put a dot into each corner that's a dollar and then the whole square is five dollars. So, um, currently Alison is in third place. I'm in second place and Sam is
What are, what are we?
Kendra passed you. I missed it. Kendra's ahead of you now.
Oh, how much do we have to give? We can fix this.
For now, so.
It was fun. We have
Yeah, finally in the square. So there's, um, the only ones that really don't have a lot on them is corrections.
Yeah.
Wow. Jason has and Sean and John have one, which may have been me. But other than that, there's no one on corrections. So putting, putting that out there.
Cause our staff likes to sit on
Also, Chantel, will you please, um, educate anybody in terms of how, what we need to bring to pay?
So
So pay via
So we have the ability to, right now it's primarily cash. We don't have credit cards or any of that. Um, there's two locations that you can pay at. There is the main switchboard. And so you can just park right out front and pay. And then because corrections, it's not as easy for them to leave. There's a individual and I'm I can't recall the name of him. Um, who is also collecting there. And then it is being consolidated. So I sent the picture over so that Jason's team, because they have the same board. Um, can do that as well. And then we will pull the drawing and the top three will get tied by our president. Um, but we may have to extend it a little bit, um, because some people are like, I didn't know.
Yeah, cause our staff is
It's different. It's new. It's So, um, we're kind of evaluating that piece of it, but donate, it goes to the Alzheimer's Foundation. Uh, we are gathering raffles. It will be coming up soon. A lot of the local businesses have donated some items. Uh, but it finished at a year membership.
That's really
Black card, I guess that's
How much do we donate? Whatever you want. Whoever has the most money towards their name, is that so?
So, uh, what, what some of us did, because it was all kind of the same people. And then there was a lot of conversation. Maybe this is a good clarity. A lot of individuals were like, well, will they know that I voted for them? And I was like, no, we're not paying attention to that. It's just for tracking purposes, but like, no one no one knows that I put a dollar on Jason and except for the fact that I said it, right? Um, that's okay. I told you it was gonna. But so some of us, we kind of went through on some people that didn't have any to then get people more comfortable, but no one's tracking it. I'm not getting a list of who put money on me. I'm not. It's all in the final. That's fine. I'm, I'm here for it. I think it's fun. Um, so I think with that, the, it's, it's anonymous. No one's gonna tell who you voted for. It's really just to raise money, um, for the Alzheimer's Walk in a fun way that also engages our residents at the same time. So you can put down a dollar, you can put down more, and then the top three people, so I think Sam's at twenty, thirty dollars. He would either get tied or he'd have to pay the thirty dollars if he can.
The other thing that's important to note is members of the public can come to the switchboard, kind of, and, and
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm amazed at, because you do not need to be a member, like working at the county or
Yes.
Affiliated with the county in some capacity in order to contribute. You can come to the switchboard, you can watch the pieing. I anticipate, I mean, because probably the commissioners are all gonna be at the event that we would have to notice it up with a public meeting and there might be so, some, you know.
I'd be at those years of service event?
No.
Oh, okay.
Our original goal, we decided it would be following a board of commissioners meeting, um, so that it wasn't having to do multiple kind of components. Uh, it can't be on the sixteenth though, because
Yes, that would not. But I also
So it'll likely be the following, the last, the twenty-third, right before the walk.
Right. And because it's anonymous, if there are significant others that put in for their, you know,
Yeah.
Or
In other words, if Kevin comes in with a big check. Did you hear that, Kevin?
It's wet.
That's okay. I think my husband's playing too good, so.
So maybe, uh, even on that night, continue putting
Uh, but so that we're gonna total it the morning of
Add more money that see, that should be probably more cash at the last second.
So that's the goal.
I mean, I know.
I, we could possibly figure that out, but
I know it's last second, but never mind. I want them.
We're gonna have it on kind of the calendar of sorts and let our residents know so that they can come and watch it.
Fitting.
I think it's a good, so good bidding right towards the end.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, you know what? I'm close to a pie. No, I wouldn't put this person over, so I'm not number three.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's, it's fun and it's interesting now that it's getting out. A lot of people are starting to talk about it. So
Well, thank you.
It'll be posted somewhere. I mean, we could. I think pictures, I think however we choose to do it, it's a, it's a fun kind of, our residents, some of them have started asking like, what exactly is it? Because it's a new fundraiser initiative.
So great.
For the walk press. So, um, we'll likely kind of go from there and then word on the raffles coming soon. So.
Thank you. And it's such a good, like, it brings us all together. So it's like, it's, it's multiple layers of engagement and uh, community. Um, and Joe.
Nope.
Leila?
Um, no, thank you. Um, a few O D Ds have, have asked me, um, about the catering. Uh, because we've got a hold on it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, should we resume?
I think what we need to do is probably schedule a meeting with Sedexo first. The commissioner should have a meeting with Sedexo to see what the options are and price in. And then we can figure out a rollout strategy once we figure out what were the numbers. So that would be my suggestion. I don't
Uh, uh, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to review their first bill. Have we done that yet? And review what their catering charges might be. I mean, we're still
We have been working through the formatting on the bill. We've made some tweaks for clarity. Um, the way that we're gonna be getting the bill initially, there's gonna be a main version, but they have the ability to break out some of the components around labor and pieces from a, a knowledge standpoint. Um, they do have the ability to do catering. I know that we haven't rolled it out fully yet other than one or two kind of small things like coffee. Um, and if I am not mistaken, and I'm happy to ask them to kind of come and talk about what that process would look like. There's a system that when you finalize it, there is the cost. The, the piece that I'm gonna selfishly ask is that all falls under one of my budget lines, but I don't know what people are ordering. So part of not that I need to, but part of where it becomes an issue is as I'm watching the lines and if people are doing large orders that I'm unaware of, it then is kind of a numbers game on my side to try and figure out.
And so maybe this is one of those situations.
The ones that have a line.
Yeah.
But maybe we need to put in like, uh, you know, approval, a catering approval form. In the same way we do travel and training. I don't wanna add more bureaucracy per se, but we need to figure out how to
I think the departments need to keep track of whatever it is that they're getting catered. It should come out of their budget, not out of Chantel's budget. And that will kind of make it in check. And then if it's over a certain dollar amount, cause I, I don't know, do we, do we have a, a threshold of dollar amount that we have to approve?
I mean
Yeah, but I, I mean, it should at least go out of their, their expense account.
I just thought it was a barrier near the end, is as we were going over and Chuck very kindly was trying to help me figure out some of the numbers and pieces. There was also an influx of catering and I didn't have knowledge of it at the time. You didn't. And then we just kind of had the invoices. So
Good point. We should be billing to the department.
And I respectfully, because I'm not trying to make it difficult for everyone, and I understand that. I don't think everyone has that line or where it comes from. So by default, it has come just kind of in our regular bill. So as far as this current fiscal year, I would imagine most people don't have a line, because the only one that does is because we have those lines.
So we should work on figuring out, I mean, this is for, it goes right in line with toilet paper. Like the department, that's when they're preparing budgets. And these are things that, that we should all be mindful of coming next budget season. Um, you know, for the new building or for budgeting, I mean, for like, if you have catering, to put a line for that, create a new line for that to work.
I did tell them to plan for October's one. I haven't given them a firm date, but I, I did plan for October.
And, and do we know will Sedexo deliver food to the new building?
I, I don't know if it has been asked. They have asked me about the plans for the new building.
Yeah.
And part of my response truthfully was, I'm not involved in the new building and I, I'd be speaking out of turn. Um, so in our meeting last week, when they kind of asked about that, I didn't have the information to provide. I'm happy to see if, in one of the upcoming meetings, if a representative from Sedexo is able to speak to the catering process, give some clarity to that and answer some of those questions. I'm happy to do so and ask about that.
I need that answered.
I think we could just have a discussion about some of those things.
And we need to evaluate whether it's the right way to spend the money. I mean, it might make more sense for somebody to call up for two or three pizzas. Or, you know, at, at any given time, you know, it's, it's an expense. It doesn't, it Or, you know, at, at any given time, you know, it's, it's an expense, it doesn't, it, Sedexo, it just happens to be a convenience that's right here, which.
I said, that's, that's exactly what we do, some things, you win the, the previous company, we would look and see what they would charge us for X, and we're like, alright. We can run down a road and get something a little cheaper, so we, we always did that comparison in what we do.
Which is why, to your point, and I think you made the good point of it, it should be in the department heads budget and those lines.
And I do think that there's more clarity, because that was one of the things we talked about a lot during the R F P, is that you didn't know prior. What it was gonna cost until it was billed.
Yeah.
And then those bills were kind of just bunched in, so we weren't even sure the exact cost of things all the time. And with this one, you would know upfront.
We eat a barbecue for appreciation week, ordered from previous, thought it'd be a better deal. It wasn't, uh, we made that mistake, so, um, that's why knowing the price upfront is, this where we, we talk about so much, that we have run on everything upfront before we do any of this stuff.
Great.
So I'll reach out and ask.
Okay.
That's good.
Great, did you have any things?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, oh wait, that way, it got started with you, Leila. Okay, um, then we'll move on to new business, old business, does anybody, there, we do have a walk-in, but does anybody have any other?
I don't have any other new business.
We have, uh, a years of cert.
I'll make a motion for the second shift employees that choose to pending years of service event in October, coming second two thousand forty-five, we pay for the scheduled shift missed. Without having to utilize it by full time, and recommended by the senior director of human resources.
Second.
Discussion.
How, how many people are we talking about?
We did it last year, we have about three this year, it's, it ranges from, you know, eight to three.
Yeah. Understood, I'll, I'm good with it.
Great. On the motion, Commissioner Tombrilla?
Yes.
Make sure Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
I, I, I do have just a quick question, do we have more people than usual on this, uh, years of service? That was a big pile. Of certificates.
A little bit less than last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I think so.
Protective amnesia.
It'll be a good party.
Yeah.
Um, all right, we'll move right on to public comment.
Nobody here.
So quiet then, and then we will move into non-public.
Moving in public.
We do.
Motion into non-public session, uh, so, we usually have a say ninety-one dash eight, call three one two, a personal.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tombrilla, and I vote yes, now we're not, not. Um, good afternoon, we're back in public session after being in non-public session, and I have a motion relative. We have five non-public sessions, and, um, I move to, uh, seal. I think, oh, I'm going to seal all the minutes indefinitely, but for different reasons, but it's, it's essentially, um, I move to seal. One, three, four, uh, in five, because. Uh, it could adversely affect the reputation of, of an individual other than a member of this board, and we don't have any conclusion. And I move to seal two indefinitely, because it could render a proposed action ineffective. And we don't have any, uh, firm date on resolution of the issue.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Tombrilla, and I vote yes. One final motion.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor? I, vergeur, and take care, everyone, have a nice afternoon.